Good evening and welcome to the January 25 regular meeting of the City of Arcata Planning Commission. We're holding this meeting as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. If you wish to make a public comment during the meeting, there are two ways. While on your computer, if you wish to speak during the public comment portion of any item, click on the raise your hand icon on the right-hand side of your screen. When the public comment period opens, you'll be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. If you were on your phone, you can also join the meeting and comment by calling the number and meeting ID, all of which are at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine to let the clerk know you wish to speak. When the public comment period opens, you will be unmuted and you'll have three minutes to speak. Tonight, however, we're having technical difficulties, so the agenda item won't be listed, but we will try to let you know what's coming up, so you can call in and make your comments. So this meeting is now officially called to order. Director Loya, can we get a roll call?
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Tegney?
Here.
Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor, Vice Chair Mayor, excuse me, and Chair of the State Elcock?
Here.
And I'll note for the record that Commissioner Davies is absent.
Okay, and at the staffs table, we have David Loya, Director of Community Development. And do we have Joe Matier, Senior Planner there also?
Joe Matier is in attendance, yes.
Is it just the two of you? Yes. Okay, let's move on to oral communications. This time is provided for people in the public to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on this evening's agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any requests that requires commission actions will be set by the commission for a future agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to address something that's not on tonight's agenda?
Not seeing any hands raised for early oral communication.
Okay, on to the consent calendar. The only item is our January 11 minutes. Does anyone need to pull that item, or can we get a motion to approve?
I can move to approve.
We have a first by Commissioner Mayor. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barstow. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Tegney?
Hi.
Commissioner Barstow?
Hi.
Mr. Figueroa?
I'm standing since I was a president.
Okay, Commissioner White?
Hi.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Hi.
Chair of the State Elcock?
Hi. Motion passes. So tonight's one and only public hearing is a consideration of an amendment to approve the use permit and coastal development permit for Septin Tiro Winery tasting room at 656 Street. Before we open the public hearing, do any commissioners have an ex parte communication to disclose? Okay, well, then I do, because I got one of these little sheets. And so I have to recuse myself because I own property right across the street. And I'm going to let Vice Chair Mayor is going to take over. And since we really don't have any other items on tonight's agenda, I think I'll just set the rest of this meeting out, not come back in, if that's okay with everyone. Okay, thank you, everyone. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay, as Chair of the State Elcock said, the public hearing tonight is number 5A on our agenda to consider approving the use permit and coastal development permit amendment for the Septin Tiro Winery. The applicant seeks an amendment to the 2018 Planning Commission action by amending a specific condition of approval that required music to cease at 8:00 PM. The applicants request the authorization to cease music instead at 10:00 PM. The Community Development Department supports the proposed amendment with modifications to the Planning Commission's action with findings and conditions of approval noted. And can we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening. My name's Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata, the assigned planner for this project tonight. We have before you, the planning commission is an amendment of a 2018 action that the Planning Commission took to allow the Septin Tiro Winery to operate a tasting room at the facility at 656 Street. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this amendment through the use permit and coastal development permit by adopting the action that you'll find as Attachment A. The action includes the findings and conditions of approval from the original 2018 action that the Planning Commission took to originally approve this project. And the amendment is, added text is double underline. Any deleted text would be strikeout. So that's how you can tell what is being amended by the 2022 action adopted by the Planning Commission. The attachment and the action include the revised findings and conditions of approval. And these are based on the project application that you'll find as Attachment B. We did include Attachment C, which is revisions of the land use code noise standards. And as that maybe is a discussion for this item. Next slide, please. The project is located in the coastal central business district and also the commercial central district. It is a double frontage lot. You'll see the outline of orange. It has frontage on 7th Street to the north and 6th Street to the south. So it's near City Hall, just around the corner from us. It is mainly accessible from the 6th Street frontage and includes almost two-thirds of the property where there's interior space and a large outdoor area as well. Next slide, please. This is a view from street view. It's 2018. It's really before the Septin Tiro did their investment to upgrade the property, the interior and exterior of the property, but I just wanted to give kind of a street view of that. And anyway, at this point, they're requesting, applicants are requesting modifications to the original approval. There isn't any expansion of the building footprint that we have here. Next slide, please. This is the site plan from the 2018 building permit review. This is after the Planning Commission took their action. And it includes some of the improvements required by the action of the Planning Commission. So on the left is the sort of the northern two-thirds portions of the property, the subject area of the property. The hashed line is the interior area, subject to the Septin Tiro Wine tasting room. And then the image on the right is the southern portion of the area. It's kind of the outdoor seating area landscaped and that area there. So just as a reference point there. Next slide, please. The applicants requested the condition of approval be amended to include music past 8:00. That was an adopted condition of approval by the 2018 action. And they also want to have the opportunity to do live music. And they've been in operation for a number of years, you know, just after the action in 2018 and after the interior and exterior improvements were made. And of course, the COVID-19 pandemic hit and restaurants and the service industries were struggling to maintain their clientele and their staffing. And outdoor seating was one of those things that was recognized by the city. And the city council took action to allow restaurants to, you know, use parking lots and have outdoor dining. So there has been a concerted effort to kind of support the food and beverage industries through those actions. But I believe the clients realize kind of how the setting is really convenient for them to have some outdoor dining area there. They do have a permanent food truck there that does provide food service for their patrons that are at the wine tasting as well. There is no wine manufacturing onsite. This is done offsite. And California alcoholic beverage control allow offsite tasting rooms. So this is what the original city action was, was the tasting room. And tonight, we are expanding or considering expanding the, some of the conditions of approval that were with that 2018. What we see in the C2 here is the amended condition of approval. And what we're really looking at is kind of a self-monitoring of the code here. We do have existing standards and they're ubiquitous across whatever the land use activity is. So in this case, you know, they're going to have an outdoor dining area and they will have some background music. And also, they want to have some special events or things to draw in their patrons and customers, including possibly live music. The condition of approval is amended to really put notice on the applicants that, you know, if we do have noise complaints from their operation, that, you know, we're really looking for self-compliance with that and that they're going to have to, you know, address those concerns if they are out of compliance. Next slide, please. The findings and conditions of approval, again, the city staff supports this. We believe that, you know, it's an important business activity in the downtown area. It's a vibrant community in this area. It is a mixed-use area. We do have, you know, besides the commercial professional business offices and retail spaces, we have other food serving and beverage services in the area of indoor commercial recreation as well as residential units within that area. And city staff supports and recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the findings and conditions of approval as amended that you'll find in Attachment A. And it doesn't include the California Environmental Quality Act environmental findings, existing facilities exemption. Next slide, please. Repeat of what I just said. It's based on the project description you'll find in Attachment B. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. A lot of this did come out of code enforcement. We did receive a high number of complaint concerns regarding not only having noise beyond 8:00 adopted standard that was established in 2018, but then also the volume of music. Those complaints were high in number. The Arcata Police Department was called several times. Their Community Development Department staff was called. The city manager's office was called. And we worked with the clients on bringing them into compliance with the original adopted conditions of approval. And as a result of that, they've kind of realized, it's like, look, that 8:00 was, really didn't understand what that, you know, that we would want to go beyond that. So they're trying to go ahead and increase that 10:00 to meet the needs of their clientele there. And then, and what we've done to ameliorate that is to kind of place into the condition of approval the, look, if you're out of compliance, you're going to have to establish mitigation. The easiest one is to unplug the music, turn the volume down, stop operations after 10:00. But if there continues to be additional generations and identified non-compliance, then we'll have to look at what other mitigation measures we'll be able to try to reduce those impacts of the noise. Staff did receive some public comments that we forwarded to the Planning Commission and the applicants on the supplemental. And they addressed some of the noise issues, concerns of the immediate neighbors there. And at that point, I'll be happy to ask or answer any questions you may have. And I'll pass it on to the Vice Chair for deliberation.
Actually, I did have just, I'm sorry, I did have just one last little comment to make on the staff report before we turned it over. And, you know, it's important to note, as Joe stated, that, you know, this was in part predicated on some complaints that we had received. And so it was a measure to ensure that they were in compliance with their application and their approvals. But it's also important to note that of the many times that, you know, staff and the police and city manager's office were phoned, to my knowledge, all of these complaints were from one complaint. And so I don't want the commission to walk away from the staff report with the impression that we've received numerous complaints throughout the entire area. Noise is a, you know, is, you know, different things are going to bother different people. And this is definitely, as Joe mentioned, vibrant downtown area where there are lots of activities going on that are going on throughout the night, late in the night. And so, you know, people who are next to those, adjacent to those, those mixed uses are, you know, subjected to those, you know, additional uses often into the night. So I just wanted to be clear and make sure that the Planning Commission understood that there were multiple complaints from one complaint.
Okay, thank you very much for the staff report. Do any commissioners have questions that you would like to ask staff? Dan, Daniel, and then is there anyone else? Okay.
Joe, if you could just clarify, you said something, I think you used the word self-compliance. If we move this from 8:00 to 10:00 and the complaints still come, but they're below their decibels and they're before 10:00, is there, what does self-compliance mean in that situation?
If they're complying with the land use code standards and the established condition of approval, then there would be no requirement for them to mitigate any of that or have that self-compliance. So they are already in self, they're complying, so they won't need to do anything.
I want to be clear about that piece too, though, is that, you know, staff and the City of Arcata would, you know, assist with any, you know, complaints that are made to ensure that compliance occurs. So it's not, I don't, you know, we're not just saying, you know, they'll take care of making sure that they're in compliance. We'll verify and monitor that compliance as well.
No, as long as they stay below 10:00, if this goes through, and below the decibel range that's acceptable in the downtown, they'll be fine, right? At 10:00, they unplug or turn off or whatever it is? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission to staff? John Barstow?
Yeah, I'm having trouble reading the code and understanding what land use, just this is categorized, is it not? Perhaps we don't have all the noise ordinance in front of us. Anyway, I'm having a little trouble figuring out what the, what the standard is supposed to be. I noticed that the specification of 75 decibels at receiving spot was called out, but it was struck out. So is 75 decibels at the receiving area the standard? And how the heck loud is 75 decibels?
Some of the comments made by Commissioner Barstow, I was not able to understand for clarity purposes. But I believe that one of the last things you asked was 75 decibels. That is for a time range, we're referring to Table 3-2 of the Land Use Code Section 942.050. And the 75 decibels is the maximum between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And then it changes to 70, well, no, 75 is actually the same maximum for, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's the hourly that changes at 55 to 50 in the later in the evening. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Barstow?
Yeah, he had a second question too, which was how loud is 75 decibels? And in our general plan, we have a figure in a, which is entitled "The World of Noise." 75 decibels is considered loud as a subjective description. And it's the approximation of freeway traffic at 50 feet or a lawnmower.
And I believe that the noise reading would be taken at the property line of the receiving person. So it'd be at the property line of the business operation.
And that actually has some nuances depending on the receiving land use as well. So we can dig into those details if you're interested. But in general, Joe's description about the property line is accurate.
I was just hesitant to approve this without really understanding how loud it will be at the receiving property. And I'd have to question whether a booming bass would be more annoying, even though it's less than 75 decibels, than higher pitched sounds. Yeah, I'm just not totally comfortable. I, I, I think the, the request here is probably reasonable. But it's still not clear to me how much effect it will have on the receiving properties.
So I don't know if this helps at all to clarify, but, you know, these are the standards that we are allowed to regulate based on our, you know, land use code standards. And that maximum decibel is, is different than the hourly average decibel rating. So for dwellings, transient lodging, hospitals, and extended care and similar uses between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, 55 decibels is the maximum or is the hourly average. And after 7:00, between 7:00 and 10:00, it's 50 decibels. And to give you a sense for that, according to our world of noise, that's moderate, typical office interior, moderate rainfall. And so there may be a peak, as it's defined by, you know, these noise studies that hits at 75 decibels, but that wouldn't be an ongoing persistent 75 decibels that would, you know, otherwise translate into a much higher than 50 and 55 decibel hourly average.
Okay, are there any other questions? Um, I actually have a question looking at that same chart. And it, it, it mentions that I'm not, I'm not sure if it's on the chart or if it's in material before, but that for particular rhythmic noises, which is what you would imagine, you know, rock music would be, the city would have the option to use a noise standard at 5 decibels less than those marked on the chart that you mentioned. And I'm wondering if that's something that would have to be established in the condition of approval as adopted, or if it's something that the city would be able to use discretion to impose later on through staff. And I think after that, Christian Figueroa and Kimberly White also have their hands up.
You, you could, I mean, you know, it's a discretionary approval. Certainly, the Planning Commission could choose to make that reduction, you know, based on some findings. I think at this point, we don't necessarily have, you know, the necessary information to suggest that that should be implemented at this point, but you certainly could if you had information that is uncovered during the course of the hearing. I think that those rhythmic I think that those rhythmic noise levels that, that are being referred to, you know, there's a statement in the noise source standards that says, notwithstanding the above, above requirements, no person shall, shall allow or cause the generation of any noise of a type, volume, pitch, tone, repetition, or duration that would be found to be a nuisance by a reasonable person and beyond the boundaries of the property where the noise is generated. There's also some, you know, differences in consideration if the ambient noise levels are, are higher. And so yeah, you know, so I think that that is something that needs to be considered. And then I think that the the other piece to consider here is that the code section that you cited under D4, which is rhythmic recurring or impulsive noise sources. When noise sources have been identified to be rhythmic, recurring, or impulsive in nature, or comprised mainly of music or speech, they may, may comply with applicable noise level criteria and still be annoying to individuals. When these types of noise sources have been identified, they may be subject to additional mitigation or mediation and shall be subject to the criteria in table three, three, with negative des, des, negative five decibel penalty applied to the criteria. Now, walking through table three, three, those are the maximum allowable transportation noise levels. And so for residential, again, the average DBA would be reduced to 55, which is what the noise generation, maximal allowable noise generation of the receiving land uses on table three dash two. So the noise section is a little bit circular in a sense.
Hey, thank you. Christian Figaro.
And just a, just a quick question regarding what are the present hours of operation at this location? And the other piece is, who will be responsible from city staff to monitor decibel readings? You know, do we have our own? You know, instrument to, to measure, the code enforcement? Are they aware of, you know, added enforcement, you know, activity that they're going to be needing to do if, you know, if we approve this? And that's, that's it ultimately.
The attachment B has a project description and their days and hours of operation, Wednesday through Friday, it's 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday is 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then Sunday is 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And it would be a responsibility of the community development department staff to evaluate code enforcement. When it's a zoning and land use activity, we, the city has recently hired a code enforcement officer or position. And so I would believe that that would transfer to that individual.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that times are still the same. So thank you.
In addition, if it becomes, if it becomes overly complex, we would, you know, through a code enforcement, require that some sort of acoustical analysis be conducted. But, you know, I'll be honest, of the several noise complaints that we receive every year, many of them turn out to be, you know, fairly subjective impressions of, you know, how impactful the noise is. But, but we do have the, the capacity to at least initiate some, some monitoring. We don't have an acoustical analyst on staff, however. I want to be clear about that.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly White.
Um, I didn't receive letters, or if I did, I missed them. They came and emailed and everyone else see the supplemental letters?
So the planning commission did not read the, receive the supplemental material that was emailed this afternoon?
Not, not yet, it appears.
I believe the individual who submitted the material is here and can speak to the record. Typically, materials submitted day of the meeting aren't guaranteed to, to be, you know, read by or received by decision makers anyway. And so we can follow up and find out what happened to those letters. We do our best to try and ensure that any material received before the, the meeting is, is sent to the decision maker. So we'll, we'll track that down. But I believe that the individual is, is represented here tonight.
You know, honestly, I think I just figured out why the planning commission did not receive that. So it would be in my sent it to the wrong email address. So I apologize for that. I do have that available as a PDF. And if the planning commission would like to walk through that, I'd be happy to share that with them.
Um, does, does anyone want to see that as a PDF? Or is that something that we can see if the person who wrote that material would actually be willing to present it to us in the public comments?
As a matter of general practice, I would, you know, caution against you know, presenting letters, you know, just kind of walking through the letters in the meeting. The letters were received this afternoon. I believe that we can forward them on, Joe, if you'll, you'll go ahead and forward them on. You know, obviously, if the commission wants to walk through them, you know, by all means, it's the commission's choice. But as a matter of practice, you can imagine you know, projects with more voluminous public information would be rather unwilling to, to walk through individual letters in the public hearing.
Okay, um, if, if, if the person who submitted that letter will be participating in public comments, that seems like that may be sufficient. Kimberly White.
I, I didn't want to interrupt you. I just, was that plural letters? How many?
Believe there's about six pages of you know, string of emails and then one petition that was, you know, signed by a handful of people, maybe 10 or 15 people.
Like that's kind of relevant for us to make our decision? I don't know how we would present it. Is there a way to do it that's not too arduous?
Joe, if you are forwarding it, I'll be pulling it up on my other device here.
Okay.
Um, as, as a general practice, I don't think that we can really depend on commissioners having multiple devices that they can pull stuff sent during the meeting on. So I, I would I, I would I think ask that we open the public comments and that the commenters may present that material to us themselves. And then we may be able to see that material at the end of that public comment period. If it appears that we still haven't received it and been able to pull it up, would that, would that make sense to commissioners right now? It, it does seem that it's substantial material, which may have a bearing on our decision tonight and that we should not go without having access to material that, that was submitted. So do we have any more questions from commissioners to staff?
I just wanted to clarify that it is coming in for those of us who have access to a alternate device because I have not received.
I have not sent it yet. I'm still working on it.
Okay, um, do we have any other questions for staff from commission members? Okay, then I would like to open the public comment period for this. And ask commenters to call on the phone or comment using the information, which I believe is on the bottom of your, your computer screen, if you're on, on Zoom on a computer. I think staff will be able to answer and bring callers online. And if any of those callers are, are actually the people who submitted the material that we did not receive, you, you may be able to note that in your comment as well. So are, are we ready to go with public comments, staff?
I think so. The applicant is here and available. Do you like to hear from them first?
Yeah. Usually we do hear from the applicant first, and the applicant usually gets a chance to have the final public comment as well before we come back to the commission. So it appears that it's Jared Sandifer.
Yep. Can, can you hear us?
We can.
Great. Yeah, this is Jared Sandifer and Tyneal Humphries, owners of Septentrillo Winery. You know, thank you all for having us here this evening. You know, we're a, we're a small Humboldt County business that is, is growing and, you know, promoting tourism and economy here in Humboldt County. We support the economy in so many ways. We're, we're not a highly impactful business. And really, we're just looking for the opportunity to, you know, stay within the, the legal guidelines and constraints of the Arcadia City, city ordinance and beyond by having, you know, some music go a little bit longer than it had been before in the busy downtown area where there is a lot of noise. And we are certainly not the, the bulk of it. So that's, I mean, that's why we're here. And thank you all for considering it. My wife Tyneal has a few things to say as well.
Thank you for listening. My name is Tyneal. I own, own and operate The Tasting Room. I'm the face of this business. When you're here, Jared's the winemaker. I'm an alumni at Humboldt State, played softball there. And I think that I'd like to say that we're deeply connected to this community. And many of the complaints have come on events that we've had, been having fundraisers and things to support the general community in so many ways. And through this time of COVID, we've had to pivot this business. And excuse me if I get emotional, but we've had to pivot this business so many times to survive by opening just six months prior to the shutdown. So you know, our goal is to create a community connected place. And I'm proud of what we're doing. And in no way do we want to impact residents, but we also want to provide a space where people can connect after work together safely in downtown Arcata. So thank you for hearing from us and thank you for supporting our business.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have our next member of the public queued up?
Currently, a few hands are raised. So if you wish to speak on this item, the Septentrillo Use Permit Amendment, please click the raise hand function. Go ahead, Scott.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, yes. I would like to object to this amendment for several reasons. First off, the business has not been complying with the current timeline, which is eight o'clock. To think that, that to move this to 10 o'clock, to think that they would comply with that, now we're going to probably be moving this, what, to midnight? It doesn't make sense to me. We also try to be connected with the community and provide first responder homes to stay in. And we have other folks that live in the area that are disturbed by the late night and the volume of the music and the events that are happening. And what happens inside the business, that's terrific. You know, but when it's, when it's loud enough that multiple blocks away, it's heard. That's another thing. It's whether, whether it's in, whether it's next door in a neighborhood or in a mixed community like, like the business community and all the infilling that we've tried to do to increase the housing in downtown. We need to realize that folks need to sleep because they're going to get up and go to work in the hospitals and the fire departments and the first responders, the linemen that come in. These first responders need to be able to go to bed, get some sleep and not be interrupted. So that's anyway, thank you very much. That's, that's where I'm coming from on it. I think eight o'clock. And have a, have things kept, the noise kept to the business is what it should be.
Hey, thank you very much. Do we have another commenter ready to go?
Suzanne, go ahead.
Said it.
Hello. My name's Suzanne Bearmore. I have lived at 655 F Street since June 2020. I'm physically the closest neighbor to Septentrillo Winery. I nearly share a roof with their warehouse. I'm also a former redevelopment director for the city of Anderson, California. And as such, I'm aware of the challenges and opportunities of building mixed use redevelopment in small communities. And Septentrillo is a perfect anchor to this area. It's in a mixed use zone. It's optimal to have businesses which draw in a diversity of the community. And Septentrillo does that amply. And it's not uncommon to see people from most walks of life in the winery, young people, families, the business community, students and more. And a significant amount of what I've learned about this community has been through events at the winery. Septentrillo supports and collaborates with so many other community groups and interests. And one of my first experiences with Septentrillo was noticing the way they collaborated with competitors during COVID and allowed other businesses to provide food services in their food trailer. And that's the kind of commitment to community that we need to support and nurture as we redevelop neighborhoods. The diversity and inclusivity represented by Septentrillo customers and staff is why I love being their neighbor. And as to specific zoning issues, I can tell you that their business operations keep the amount of transient problems to a minimum when they're open. The transient issues are almost always much worse on days when the winery is not open to the public. Parking is no more or less challenging than with any other events or business in the area. While sometimes tight, there's plenty of passage for emergency and other vehicles on the street, per all the regulations. Parking is consistently more available during winery hours than it is when there are events on the plaza or crabs games at the park. I haven't seen any discernible litter problems at all. And as their closest neighbor, the noise level is not problematic. It doesn't exceed the, the 75 decibels. And it, so it won't be a problem if their hours are extended. The bigger noise issues in the neighborhood to me are the jarring sounds from the announcers at the crabs games, which do exceed 75 decibels, even from the slightly further distance. And traffic on Samoa Boulevard, the people without mufflers. And none of these approach a level which would reasonably be considered a breach of someone's right to peaceful occupancy. And to me, the sounds of laughter, tinkling glass, the occasional sounds of local music and other talent, these are the sounds of a vibrant, successful mixed use development. This is why people like myself choose to live in neighborhoods like this. And I ask that you grant the amendment to Septentrillo's use permit as it's consistent with the zoning and use of the area. And it's a piece of the fabric of Arcata that should be allowed to flourish and grow. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you very much. Do we have another commenter?
Tori, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I used to live wherever on the
I I used to live wherever from the winery. And the noise levels would be pretty high. 11 PM or so. And that was one of the reasons why I ended up moving further away out of the area. I'm not sure if it'd be a good idea.
Is everyone else hearing? I'm having difficulty hearing.
It was pretty quiet.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
That's okay. A little bit. You might try speaking up just a little.
Okay. Yeah, I was just saying I used to live right around the corner from the winery. And the noise levels were really high until like 11 PM. And that's one of the reasons why I ended up to a different place in Arcata. I don't think it's a good idea to put the hours from eight to 10 PM.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
If anyone else has comments they'd like to share, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any at this time. Go ahead, Joel and Shannon.
Hi, this is Shannon Yodowitz and my husband Joel and I, we live in downtown Arcata. In 2020, we actually lived on a property that was basically adjacent, pretty much adjacent to Septentrillo at 541 F Street. And it the windows abutted the Septentrillo side where we were facing F Street, but many windows abutted the Septentrillo side. And we kept the windows open. And not once did we ever hear any noise coming from, not even like ambient distant noise coming from Septentrillo. We did, however, benefit from being not close to Septentrillo and it provided a really great atmosphere and environment, particularly in the height of COVID, to be able to go out and to feel safe being among people and to just enjoy ourselves was it was it was really a pleasure. I have to say, being on F Street, I was far similar to what Suzanne was saying earlier. I was I was far more concerned with the 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 traffic up and down F Street. The noise of that was was far more disturbing, as was the police presence to deal with the transients. And it was, you know, there were people casing our cars all the time, looking in windows to see if they could have an opportunistic theft. And those those confrontations were were far more disturbing than anything that was ever happening. Because there was nothing ever. It was just a positive. Septentrillo was the positive in the neighborhood. There there are a lot of things that were, you know, right across the street from a big shopping center. There were things that weren't a positive, but Septentrillo certainly is the positive in the neighborhood. It it brings together, as other people have noted, a diverse community of children, adults, families, students. Everybody coming together to enjoy a safe place to be together and and feel a sense of community. 10 o'clock is a completely reasonable hour to to end any sort of, you know, noise or music. It's downtown Arcata. We live in downtown Arcata. There's there's just if there's a certain amount of activity that happens, that this creates a vibrancy. It's it's a good thing. So we certainly support the amendment to their application and and hope that you will too. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other commenters?
We do. Go ahead, Zoom user.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I just want to, my name is Michelle Healy and I've submitted a 17 person neighborhood petition to object to the new noise ordinance or time change. Thank you for your consideration to hear my voice on this matter at hand. I came to Arcata four and a half years ago and purchased a sixplex unit property and established fully furnished rentals for the sole purpose of housing essential workers and first responders, which included working with fire department, HSU, St. Joe's, Mad River, and the Humboldt Film Commission. I'm also on a newly established team by invitation by Dr. Elavide Naruda, who is an associate vice president for the diversity, equity, and inclusion for HSU. I will be helping to develop a comprehensive packet that will be given to the new professors that are hired in a need of a quality, quiet housing options for the polytech conversion. Over the years, I have invited property owners to support this need housing for issues for essential workers. I now have 30 property owners that support and beautify, excuse me, beautiful, quiet housing while the occupants fill fulfill their contracts. My experience with having the wine bar on the sixth street has caused great disturbance to myself, my neighbors, and my tenants. The business model that they have gravitated to is a live outdoor concert atmosphere. It is no longer a wine tasting venue with ambient music in the background. I have experienced on multiple occasions, four to three nights of live bands, rock and roll, live African drumming, trapeze shows, and bass DJ music that blankets three to four blocks of sound with interference of our home life and sleep. I have multiple requests from my tenants to please get control over this. I've had people move out of my establishments because of the disturbance. The large crowds that come to hear this open aired concert spills out into the streets. Our parking and alleyways are filled with their cars. I am asking that the no music pass 8:00 PM time limit be reinstated. If they do have music that is not amplified, that it is in an appropriate level and does not go beyond the contained bar area. I don't believe that any of my neighbors or myself would be able to, on a weekly basis, have live band shows and entertainment that disturbs the peace and respect that all we need to recover from our jobs, most importantly, contractors, first responders that are holding our health and our welfare together in Humboldt. The best way to recover from COVID Omnicron or a four day 12 hour work shift is to rest and have quiet in our homes uninterrupted. I work closely with Tom Jackson of HSU and Justin McDonald, the fire chief, to support, to maintain quiet, peaceful housing for our frontline workers and neighbors. I need your support. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. And do we have any other public comments?
Just checking real quick, Joel and Shannon, Shannon, you spoke. I don't know if this is Joel, but typically the planning commission allows one one turn at the mic, so.
David, but I'm a separate and independent person from my wife and I may have different views than her.
Absolutely. Just wanted to confirm and verify. Welcome, Joel.
Okay, thank you, David. My name is Joel Yodowitz during from in 2020, I lived at 541 F Street with my wife and that is the property that Ms. Healy just mentioned that she owns and tenants with first responders. Neither my wife nor I are a first responder nor there was, at the time we lived there, she did have somebody who worked at a hospital as an administrator. He was not what I would call a first responder. There were other people there, none of which were first responders. But more importantly, we didn't hear any noise. We love Septentrillo because it is a great amenity to the neighborhood. It's a wonderful spot, a vibrant spot. We slept with our windows open the entire summer. We never had any noise complaints and my wife is hypersensitive to noise. There were no issues with Septentrillo. I'm a lawyer and when I used to go to court, you know, lawyers had what's known as the rules of evidence, which required facts. We've I've heard allegations from Ms. Healy and others who said they used to live in the neighborhood about noise. I I didn't hear any what I would consider evidence. It's easy to tar and feather somebody. But but where's the proof? From a firsthand knowledge, I'm telling you, there was no noise, perceptible noise in Ms. Healy's building for the entire summer of 2020. I think Septentrillo is 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 an amenity for the city of Arcata. It provides a place where people can gather safely outdoors. And I think the planning commission, you know, should approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other public commenters who would like to speak?
I am not seeing any at this point. Last call for for comments.
Okay, if if there if there are no new commenters, are there any new commenters?
There don't appear to be.
Okay, um, if there are no new commenters, we'd give the applicant an opportunity to speak again.
Hello. Hi, this is Tyneal. Hi, this is Tyneal again, and I would just like to say that I appreciate all the comments and in an effort to do better business, regardless if they feel good. I our hope is to do the best for this community. I work with many Airbnbs locally who love what we do. And we put wine in their Airbnbs and they buy it wholesale in an effort to support our local growing wine industry. We do give discounts and free tastings for travelers to introduce them to what Arcata is and the beauty of Arcata. And we collaborate with businesses. And this is an experience where a similar business that we could be collaborating and working well with. And in fact, are collaborating with because they're clients that are staying there, regardless if they're doctors, first responders, presidents of universities, they are using our space for relaxation as well. And we do a great job serving them and we have built beautifully strong contracts with the hospitals as well, where they're using our space during the day to connect. And so I just, I'd like to invite this business to share in what we're sharing with the community and share with their clients the good that we are doing and and offer free tastings and and help people to get to know what what local Humboldt County industry of wine is doing and the beverage community in general. So, you know, I I'm disappointed that there is this discussion and but I'm I'm proud of what we're doing and I and I only hope to do better, regardless of a timeline. I hope to do better in the years to come as a growing young business that started right before before COVID. So thank you for your time and and I appreciate all of you very much.
Okay, thank you for for your comments. If there aren't any more comments from the public, I'd like to go to the commission and I see that Dan Tangney has something to ask. I I had, I I wanted to put something before you as well, since we haven't seen the material that was submitted in in writing yet to to also ask the commissioners what you would like to do about that. So, Dan Tangney?
All right, before we lose Tyneal, I just wanted to ask the applicant one quick question. I can wait though if you want to go on forward with your thought.
I'm I'm actually fine if you'd like to ask that question.
Okay, Tyneal, can you describe to us? I'm not as familiar with your operation down there as I'd like to be, but are you, can you describe, is music background ambient or is music the show? Because it's sound that that would sound really different to me, I think, if, you know, how it if it was so loud that it was the show, I would think that everybody would be there not talking, but just listening, rather than ambient music where everybody's there to talk to each other and have some music in the background.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that. Actually, if that's all right, Dan, this is Jared Sandifer. Really, it's ambient and it's background. You know, we've had one fundraiser where the music was a little bit too loud. It was a miscommunication with the DJ. He was actually monitoring the decibels from from his stand. And, you know, it just didn't seem accurate. So, you know, we shut it down at a very reasonable hour. And I think that that was the only real real complaint, which there have been so many complaints and most of them have been null and void. There's, you know, this lady's called the police at 8:01 PM on many days and we didn't even have noise, just to get on the record. It's kind of crazy. It's 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 harassment on a whole nother level that we're, I can't even go into. But yes, it's background music. It's not some kind of music venue that's engulfing three blocks in every direction. I've it's really, really kind of wild, the accusations that we're hearing from this person.
And I and I will say, just just to answer that, because I'm the one doing the work with these musicians. You know, every musician has a different theme or or that they're doing. And all of these musicians were shut down for the from their business through COVID as well. So the idea of having music and bringing in clientele and supporting this musician, again, is in collaboration with local local community members. I believe that we've done things to change the tones and the ways and and we have the tools on site to watch the decibels because we do want to impact our community, right? No, it's not a quiet inside stereo system. It's a it's a band playing for two hours. You know, at six o'clock and and, you know, my hope is that it can be seen as an asset, not a detriment to the community, as I've heard that it is an asset. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, so we we've we've heard from the business owners and operators again. Before we go on, I'd like to ask the commission what you would like done with the material that we didn't receive in time for this meeting? Because it was mentioned by one of our commenters and it seems that several other people were represented in that submission. Kimberly, you have your hand up?
I, to my understanding, so there was a petition. There were 17 people who signed. I don't know that we need to go any further with that. My understanding is, how many emails? Was it a couple if I'm understanding that and one letter?
There's a total of 17 pages in the submission. One of the pages is a header page, so 16 pages of text.
Are they all from one person or I guess that I'm curious as to if it's all one person as the owners were saying, then that makes a difference.
Their email exchanges between a public member and staff, a single person email exchanges between public members staff. I mean, if you want, I can just share with you real quick. It's a it's a little unusual to receive something day of and expect that it gets into the record. But if the commission wants to do a straw poll, I can share with you with what we're describing at this point. We've described it and sort of tantalized the public with the potential of this public information.
Okay, I guess I'm just wondering if if it is a petition. If 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 anyone wants to see the actual wording of the petition, because we haven't seen it. And it could conceivably something be something that would affect affect our decision. Would anyone like to see the wording of the petition or would you like to let it go?
I guess if it's just, you know, quick, it wouldn't hurt. And then my other question is, is it a long letter? Not trying to cause grief, I'm just wondering.
I'm just going to bring this into the record. We're beating around the bush. I'll show you what was submitted and you can tell me if you want to review it more in more detail. Does that sound okay?
What is the wording of the petition? Do we know what we're being petitioned?
Can you see the petition now?
No, I can see a list of names, but I don't see the petition.
This this is what This is what was submitted. It says at the top of it, petition against live music at Septentrillo Winery Bar. And then if you'd like, I can scroll through the other materials that are submitted in here. And then you can tell me.
So, there's no narrative? There's no other writing on that petition? It's just a set of names?
This is what was submitted.
Okay, and I see that it's dated today.
I don't know if you can see it or not, dude, that just says a petition against live music.
That's what I see. I don't see any other words on there except that and the names. And so I was asking if there is any other material other than the email exchange and the names.
There's a list of emails, string of emails, a couple of different strings here.
Okay, and that was attached to the petition that was submitted today?
This is not attached to this petition as far as I know. This is just, this is what was submitted in the late submittal that we tried to email to you. As it turns out, the file is too large, so I'm not sure it's making it through your email systems.
Personally, I feel like we've seen enough.
Okay.
Okay. Let's ask if the commissioners are willing to deliberate now and then if there are any issues that come up. We can address them with staff. Would we like to deliberate, starting with
Something first.
One person? Kimberly, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, just something about diversity. And they had, a couple of weeks ago, actually, I didn't get to go, I was all excited. We had a planning commission meeting, but branches, Humboldt. It is a non-denominational church here that's just come to Arcata and they held an event there. So, they do have diversity. I did have one question. It can't be modified at all, right? We're looking at, it's seven days a week with the exception, on Sunday it closes at eight anyway. So, we really wouldn't need to worry about music unless they changed their hours, right?
I'm I'm not sure.
Joe, you want to address that?
Joe, you're muted.
I believe Commissioner White asked about modification of the hours of operation or the condition of approval.
Condition of approval.
That is, the attachment A includes recommended conditions of approval paired by staff. The commission can, has the prerogative of amending those as they see fit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White, do you have any other questions? Or thoughts that you'd like to bring to deliberations?
I just was wanting to ask if there were modifications allowed by the commission? Just putting it out there for other commissioners to think about. And no, I don't have any other questions or thoughts. Thank you for asking.
Okay, other commissioners' thoughts?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve. But I'm glad to hear from others if they want to relay.
Okay, other commissioners' thoughts? I guess I have some thoughts. And then I think we can accept a motion. It does seem as though there are contradictory facts being presented here. Some of them say there's a lot of noise in the neighborhood coming from the winery after eight o'clock, and there has been. And others are saying there's not. And so we as commissioners have no way to know whether there has been an annoying loud noise after the current allowed hours of operation or whether there hasn't been. And so we're being asked to make a decision while there are still contradictory facts out there. And so we're going to be asked to, you know, believe some people and not believe others or see them as overly sensitive. And so that puts us in a difficult position because we could be approving something which will actually increase the levels of annoyance for people who are already annoyed. That said, I think that the way our land use code and our nuisance codes are written, that there are opportunities for enforcement if it turns out that people are being annoyed. Whether the hours of music are going to end at eight or whether they're going to end at ten. And it's a little bit difficult to know who to believe and whether extending the hours is going to make an existing problem worse or whether there's not really that much of a problem to begin with. So, yeah.
Just like to throw the discussion also goes around just, you know, what neighborhood is this? It's the downtown. It's the commercial district of Arcata where noise occurs. And sometimes that's just the reality of who chooses to live where. There are quieter parts of town, absolutely. I lived right off the plaza for twelve years previous to where I live now. And noise was just part of life. And mostly, like some of the people said, it was from the street. A lot of sidewalk noise, people just reveling downtown. Often, we woke up at, when the bars got out, because people were walking home and making noise. And you just can't control it. You get used to it. And if you don't like that lifestyle, then you might not want to live in the downtown. So, as a commission, do we feel it's reasonable for a business that is in the properly zoned area for this kind of usage to have music below a certain decibel up to ten o'clock? As late as people tend to go out these days, I get that eight o'clock is a real shortcoming for this business, you know? People are probably just starting to show up. So, personally, I feel like it's part of a growing entertainment area and that this is just one of the realities. And that they damn well better stick to it being ambient background music that doesn't go beyond a certain decibel and definitely not a moment after ten o'clock if we approve this. Like, they have to do their part. But if music isn't their show, I sure wouldn't be there if I couldn't go there with friends to visit and the music is so loud that I can't even talk. And I can't imagine that that's the way this place is running. I've been there a couple of times, but it's been a couple of years. And I sure don't remember music driving me out. I get driven out by music often. So, if they're really changed their tempo and their crowd into that music is why people come there, then it does sound like it might be a challenge and too loud. But I just can't imagine that that's really what's going on there. It's, you know, that formerly was an industrial property. I worked on it thirty years ago for a couple of years. And we ran mills and machinery all day long and made a ton of noise. So, this is a different use. It's much quieter. I don't know. I'm for this times change. I feel like it's appropriately downtown. And that if you want to live downtown, you just have to accept some things, you know? There's different parts of every city that are kind of the central districts where you just have to be a little more tolerant of noise. And this feels to me like that's the reality of a block off the plaza.
John Barstow, is your hand up?
Yes. I share Judith's qualms about the situation. On the other hand, though, my understanding is that if not for the existence of this condition of approval in the original approval, that they would simply be subject to the requirements of the noise element in the land use code, which everybody has to comply with. So, at this point, I kind of lean toward approving this application with the hope that if the time limit and/or the decibel limit is exceeded, that the city will take the appropriate actions to stop that.
Okay, any other commissioners? Christian Figueroa?
Yeah, I just wanted to just resonate with what Dan said. Being a downtown resident as well, this is kind of a thing that we have to accept in regards to living in, you know, this part of the community. Yeah, I wake up every morning at five o'clock and I hear the co-op and the truck backing up and the beep beep beep. You know, it's just a matter of fact of living in downtown. I live here for a reason, though, you know, because I like being social. I like having quick access to interaction with individuals. So, you know, I think it's, you know, naturally it's designed within our code and ordinance. You know, there's means and measures and where in which, you know, if the applicant doesn't follow rules, you know, there's repercussions of that. So, it's just a matter of fact, you know, living downtown is loud. You know, I've just had to learn to accept it, you know, moving from Trinity County, moving back to Arcata, from Trinity County, living on the woods, to living in downtown. It's still not that loud, you know? Having lived in Los Angeles and Southern California and so forth, where there's always ambient noise that's an exceedance of sixty-five decibels or seventy-five decibels. So, I'm for approving the extended hours for noise related to music and ambient music and so forth. So, I just want to put that out there.
Okay, I think we've heard from all the commissioners now. And I guess do we have anyone else who wants to say anything else? I guess one of the things I'm remembering on the commission is that we have required other venues that have music and live music to make some fairly massive investments in noiseproofing their establishments so that their neighbors didn't have to hear what was going on in their businesses. And while those weren't a matter of, you know, extending a permit by a couple of hours, they did represent some very, very substantial costs to those businesses that a business with outdoor music isn't being asked to shoulder. So, there's a sort of a matter of fairness in my mind as well. But do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the use permit and coastal development permit amendment, Septentrillo Winery Tasting Room at 650 Sixth Street.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. All David Lloyd, do we need to specify anymore about what the motion includes at this point or is that sufficient?
I believe it's sufficient. The action incorporates the action findings, conditions, and sequo determination.
Okay. So, we've had a motion and a second. Can we call the question commissioner by commissioner, starting with Commissioner Figueroa?
We're doing a roll call.
Yes, we're taking a vote. And we have to do it one by one, just because we're not all in the same room together.
Got you. All right.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Barstow? Commissioner Tengney?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye on this matter. So, it passes unanimously with two commissioners, either absent or abstaining. So, that matter passes. And I guess if Julie is gone, then we'll just, I'll continue to chair the meeting. And our next matter on the agenda is I'm trying to find it here, business items, agenda number six. Do we have any business items?
There are no business items.
Okay, item number seven, correspondence and communications. Yes, Commissioner Tengney?
Yeah, two things. I want to thank the city for putting on the the visitor public interaction or the Gateway Project that occurred Friday and Saturday. It was nice to get down there and see people interacting and putting stickers and thoughts on the wall. And that said, I just want to make a small pitch because I think it will impact all of us. The, what is it called? The Bureau of Ocean Energy and Management is doing some public scoping. There's a meeting tomorrow evening via Zoom about the offshore wind project, the Humboldt Offshore Wind Project. And I don't think the word got out much about this. I was on it today. There was about fifty participants. It ran this morning and the second session is tomorrow evening at five o'clock. And you'll just have to go to Humboldt Wind or Bureau of Ocean Energy Management or somewhere to find a link for it. There's a Zoom link. You have to sign up ahead of time. And they accept public input. But otherwise, it's a great, just kind of intro to the beginning of their environmental assessment process. And all of the different details are going to be unrolling in months and years to come.
Okay, thank you. Other correspondence, communications, anything from staff?
I'll just, I'll bring up on the gateway theme, a little riff on that. We are bringing the gateway area plan to various committees through the month of February. And so folks that are interested in that long-range planning effort or the general plan amendments in general should stay tuned in to our calendar. And sign up for e-notifications. If you go to our main webpage on the left-hand side, there's an e-notifications link. And if you sign up for the long-range planning e-notification, you'll be on a listener that gets information about hearings and special events around this long-range planning work.
Okay, and of course, the draft plan has been published. That's also available online in that gateway location on the city's website. And I did have an item that I had mentioned to staff. I would really like to ask at some point for clarification on what the city of Arcata's regulatory authority is. regulatory authority, authority is for the numerous properties that the Humboldt State University Foundation and Humboldt State and the HSU Real Estate Holding Corporation have been acquiring off campus. It, it seems like it should be sort of a cut and dry issue where, where if property is owned by the state, the, the city and the planning commission don't have much to say about it, but it, there are a number of different steps and variations in that. And so I, I would really like to have a briefing from staff, hopefully including the city attorney about those real estate, real estate and development transactions and what the cities and the planning commissions roles might be in particular. And how the city and the planning commission and citizens can have useful and productive input into decision-making around those properties. So, this is, this is a request that was prompted, I guess, by, by news about some new HSU Foundation land purchases and and development plans. So, if there are no other correspondence or communications, thank everyone for participating in this meeting today in zooming in from wherever you are and in speaking your two cents. And we are adjourned.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, David.